Call the roll.
Mayor Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. If there's anyone here from the public that wants to comment on any issue not on today's agenda, come on up to the podium. Give us your name and address. Okay, we do not have awards or proclamations today. We don't have public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time. We have a consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of October 10th, 2011. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 116858, appointing members to the Arts and Humanities Commission and the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee.
Does the Commissioner want to take either item off of the consent agenda or have any questions?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Do not have development business, so we're on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 1110620, amending Chapter 38, Article 3, Section 38-45 of the Line of Code by increasing overtime parking fees, fines.
Ordinance 11-10620 was passed on first reading on October 10th, 2011. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone here that wants to comment on this ordinance today? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the Commission for Action.
Excuse me, if I may. We did have, as you know, we had one other kind of a sidebar comment. And then Commissioner Crawford, I don't know, I don't want to speak for you, but if you, this is a pretty good topical time to maybe ask the question that was asked.
Well, I worked in this building a number of years, and I've seen people lined up to get at the tax assessment office. I've seen them sitting out there on chairs, waiting for the appeal process. I'm sure a lot of them have spent a lot longer than three hours. People come in to get their tags. This is the, I feel like this is the People's Building, and I just hate to see people wait in line for three or four hours for their appeal on their taxes, or for their tags, or the court system, any of that, and then come back down out and get smacked with a $5 fee for parking. So, I wasn't here last week, so I guess my, that's my comment. And I feel like when people come to this building, this is their building. And I think $5 is too high. I don't think it's too high over the rest of the community. I just think this is the People's Building, and they do the People's Business here, and they shouldn't be smacked with a $5 fine.
Commissioners, thinking about that a little bit, that kind of the, so everyone is aware, we obviously have throughout the downtown and also including this specific government-owned site, certain parking times. And if you violate those times, you're subject to a parking ticket, which the $5 would apply. So, that kind of is part of the background to that. Talking with Greg, we, it's typically considered not something legally that you want to do with regards to having different pricing in different geographic areas for a fine for the same type of violation. It's a parking fine for being more than three, parking more than three hours in a three-hour area. Usually don't say in this area of the community, it's, you know, $10, and here it's $5, and here it's $2. But what it did prompt, I think, was whether or not you would like us to ask the building authority to have a discussion, because they can establish on the property what the parking timeframes are. And if there's a way that, if the Commission agrees, it's a concern. If there's a way that you might want to go about addressing it, it could be having the building authority simply take a look at the parking timeframes. If three hours is considered to be problematic, and it should be longer, they could consider whether those spaces could be for four hours, for example. So, I just want to throw that out to you to see if there's maybe some follow-up activity that you'd like staff to do on your behalf.
Where do the city and county employees park?
City and county employees park in part of this parking lot, but not in the shorter term. They're further down. And then a lot of them are on the streets around the building site. And some of them are in parking lots, one to the southeast across Caddicatty Corner, some over to the east of the Chamber Building, and then some are parked over here on the corner, just kind of the southwest until such time as that's approved. But it's being used for parking right now. I think that pretty well covers where they're parking.
I actually have a quick question about the parking. That used to be the muffler shop over there. Is there handicap parking over there? Someone asked me that the other day.
Well, it's officially not a parking lot. It's, the building authority does have plans to actually do the construction to make it a nice parking lot. And at that point, they'll include the accessible parking spaces.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Good question.
What about just a voucher versus looking at the hours? Is there something we could look at with that, maybe, or?
Possibly, yeah. It's possibly, there's probably a lot of ideas that could come about with that question.
I think that may make more sense than changing the times, because obviously they came up with the times. I think we should look at the time again, but that way, we're not running people out there four hours when three is adequate. But maybe the specific people who come in and do have to wait three hours could get a voucher from the tag or whoever else. I've never waited three hours for a tag, but it probably could get that bad.
Are jurors ticketed right now?
I think typically, I don't want to misspeak on this, but I believe that jurors are given some form of a voucher, a tag, or something on the presumption that they're going to be there longer than three hours. And so, that keeps them from getting those tickets, I believe. So, either that, or they handle it after the fact. But I do believe that they work with the jurors.
But no matter what, the building authority would be the ones to handle all of those things.
I think it probably falls in their lap. Is that your take, Greg?
Versus us.
Voucher, or a pass, or something like that.
Okay.
So, what, if, do we go ahead and pass this and refer it on to them for times, or what kind of action do we take?
Yeah, unless you think, unless you think the potential for them dealing with the question won't end up where you might not even know where you want it to be. I would go ahead and take action on this, and then ask staff to just follow up with the building authority. And I mean, we have two members on there as well, so we have good means to bring that up as a topic of discussion for their meeting.
I agree with Commissioner Crawford on, it would be a shame if we have identified processes that take four, five, six hours, and we don't supply parking. So, that just seems to be the common sense part of that. And, you know, this is a fine structure for the violation. So, I would think approving this sets in the violation uniformly, and then the board should urge the building authority to make sure that parking terms coincide with the maximum amount of time that people are delayed within the building.
Staff would be happy to write a letter to make that an official request for consideration.
Sure.
So, I believe the motion and second has been made. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Householder.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley.
Aye.
Commissioner Angel.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 1110621, amending Chapter 38, Article 3 of this Line of Code by adding Division 2 pertaining to towing and storage of vehicles.
Ordinance 11-10621 was passed on first reading on October 10th, 2011. As directed by the Commission, the ordinance was amended since first reading. The amendment serves follows. Section 38-52 is changed from, quote, "upon providing proof of title or registration," end quote, to, quote, "upon demonstrating proof of title or registration." The Second Amendment is in Section 38-53, which was amended to clarify when notice to the police department is required, and that notification can be by email, telephone, or fax. Is there any public comment on this ordinance today?
Come on up and give us your name and address.
My name is Deborah Livinggood. I live at 627 Gypsum Apartment Number 5. I am co-owner of ANA Towing. I have a little problem. We found out through the grapevine that this hearing was last Monday. Everybody was notified by email Friday, October 7th. We were in Kansas City with our grandchildren at Worlds of Fun. We came back. Meeting had already been held. My issue also is, the email was dated October 7th. The paperwork that I downloaded was already dated October 10th. You go to the back page, you know, you could down, get on the link and download and print, go to the back page of the paperwork, introduced October 10th, 2011, passed October 17th, 2011. And I printed this at a quarter till 7:00 this morning.
I think there may be some confusion as to time. I think maybe what you downloaded on the 7th was what was for the agenda for the 10th?
Okay, this is what I downloaded and printed.
Is that?
Was directly to the link that I was sent by Carson Mansfield.
Do you know what it is, Mr. Gage, or Mr. Schrag? Anybody know what?
I would have to look at it. I'm not sure. The dates tend to make sense.
She's referring to the packet that's online that have the draft ordinances before you.
So, because second reading is today, that's why it's dated that it would be passed with today's date?
The ordinance, yes. The ordinance that's online appears, is how the ordinance is drafted for you to consider. And it has those dates in there.
That's my concern. And because nobody could bother to pick up a phone and call, it was sent via email Friday. Nobody called. And my own husband was insured, assured by Mr. Gage that these meetings would not be held. We would be notified when there was a study session. Email is not for everybody. We're a busy, busy company. We're also raising, we're almost 15-year-old twins. We run two businesses. We own the building that we live in. It's human decency to make a phone call.
Do you have any objections to the ordinance?
Yes, I do.
In itself, what are your objections to the ordinance?
Well, I think you may have already fixed a couple of them. The bit about, we have to notify within two hours. What if we impound a vehicle at 2:00 in the morning? You want us to get up and email to?
No, no, we'll have you use the phone and call.
Yes.
We modified that.
Yeah. Or by fax.
Yeah, and I hope somebody's there 24 hours a day to answer the phone.
We are.
I hope. No, no, I mean, you're calling at the police station.
It is also, are they going to redo the RFP? We were sent a proposal to respond to in July, before they were actually given the legal right to do this. We responded to that. Are they going to redo the RFP?
Yeah, I don't know.
So that we have time to respond and comply.
Not going to differentiate what's legal, not legal, but I'm not sure the other process that was legal. But yes, this is a new process. And that's why, that's why we had a new set of meetings. And we started with the ordinance, and there will be a new process for you on the RFP. And the, a lot of the contents of the ordinance will go into that. And one of the main differences is before, my understanding is, is before, there was at least a, I wasn't at those meetings, but I believe there was a thought that that former process was intended to select a single provider.
Yes.
And this is not. This is intended to select those that can meet the site and quality requirements. So, that should be a lot better.
ANA Towing is more than willing to come under compliance if we're given adequate time. There is concern about our lot. This is going to be, going into the winter season. We can't go out there and sink new light poles and do all this construction when there's six inches of snow on the ground, nine inches, 10 inches. And the city of Salina, if there's six, nine, 10, 12 inches of snow on the ground, is going to need every towing company that can get their hands on it. Thank you.
That's a good thought for us to consider.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Come on up and give us your name and address.
My name's Roy Palmer, and I live at 7925 West Pleasant Hill Road. And one of my concerns or questions was, was on the Section 3854, Notice to Impoundments, that you're going to want a certified notification to the lien holder, owner of the vehicles within two days of the impounder, whatever the towed vehicle. And, you know, a high percentage of the time, we don't know who the owner can be, or the lien holder, either one. That's when we do the process of, in 10 days, we send a letter to the state asking them to identify lien holder and owners. Is the city department or the PD going to make days owner and lien holders available to us in a reasonable time to get this done in their two days that they're wanting done? Because we'll have to send certified letter in two days, and then we've got to send another certified letter in 10 days to the state, which, you know, that's just another, I forget what certified letters are, $5 to $10 every time we do them. And then we've got to send a employee down to take care of this two different times instead of one time. So, we're going to have more expenses and, you know, accrued into this deal here, which is going to add more to our prices when we submit these to the proposal to the city for our towing rates also.
Is the way I read this, is that the police department has to help them determine the owner, that last sentence of 3854?
Yeah, Greg's got it in front of him. But what I would say on any of the requirements, if there's a hiccup, it's not of, within the control of the provider, it goes back to reasonable efforts. And if there's ever a concern with the way it's been handled by the department, they just need to contact our office, and we'll work through that, take care of it.
But yes, Mayor, you're correct, in terms of the significance of that last sentence.
So, you see that last sentence, the police department is to assist with determining who the registered owner is.
So, if they don't give us that information?
Well, if you don't have it within two days, you can't provide the notice.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yeah, it goes back to just reasonable efforts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me think, I said something else here. Okay, now, what about if you have other towing services come into the community? How are they going to enforce these regulations that you're setting up with the towing services if they're not on the rotation? You know, how are we going to, how are they going to abide by this?
Yeah.
You know, you're singling out us to do this, but you've got other people that come in and do this.
Right. I might see if Chief Hill wants to address it. My take on it is, there'll be a timing at which you go through the process of selecting those towing companies that meet the criteria, in that if you have a chance a new towing company is formed in town, they would need to fall into the timing of the selection. I don't know, Jim, that there's a interim process for if all of a sudden there is a new towing company, that it just jumps right into that process. I'm not, you might want to address how you would see that being handled.
But I was kind of curious, say, if somebody from Wichita come down here and picked up a vehicle.
Well, we can only control what the, how the businesses are run in city limits of Salina. We can't control what Wichita requires towing.
No, no, if they come into our community and impound a vehicle, are you going to enforce that on them?
If a Wichita company comes and opens a business?
No, no, no. If that, say a tow service out of Wichita, which would be tow service.
Right.
They came to Salina, picked up an impound vehicle, or repo'd a vehicle, or whatever.
Right.
How will you guys, or the city PD, enforce these rules upon them when they're coming into our community? When we're, we've got codes and stuff, we've got a bye-bye, and they don't have to bye-bye them unless they're enforced by the city.
Where are they going to keep the vehicle?
Well, they might take it to their own impound lot in another town.
So, they're not a Salina business?
Correct.
We can't control what a Wichita business does in Wichita.
Yeah, but you can control them coming into our community on the grounds of they have to follow the same rules that we have to for impounding that vehicle. It doesn't matter where the final impound is.
I think there may be two issues here. What we're looking at is, businesses are going to be on our rotation. We can't tell you if you want to have your car towed, or that you can't call a place in Wichita. This is merely for the people, my understanding is, that are on our rotation list.
These are the police-mandated tows.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's only it. So, and that's, I think, where the mayor was saying, is we wouldn't have any control if a Wichita company came in and did it.
How about, for instance, a private impound? Say, say a private property impound, how would they enforce that then? If you is a?
The only, the only requirement that falls in here is a notification, as Chief Hill requested, so that we would know. That way, if somebody's calling in or report a stolen vehicle, then there was that effort to make notification, so that we're not chasing down something that was personally removed off of property. But the rest of it applies to those in the rotation, providing a service for the city Salina through the police department. If a person calls and has their vehicle towed by somebody, Wichita or otherwise, that's not what we're hearing here. This is the contractual basis for the city.
Yeah, I mean, if Jason wants to go buy himself a tow truck and get in the towing business, and doesn't want to have it lit up, and doesn't want to give people access or whatever, oh, I mean, there's some state laws that govern him, but we're not going to go after him, because if he doesn't meet our qualification, he's just not going to be on our call list. But he can still have his, Jason's towing service, Smiling Jason's Towing Service, whatever you want to call it. Yeah, yeah. But this is, again, only for people that will do police callouts. We just want a standard of acceptable performance is all we're looking for here.
Okay.
It won't apply to all tow lots, just the ones that choose to be on our rotation.
Right. Okay, and one of the other concerns I had was on the release of the all personal belongings in the vehicle before they have, they take care of the towing charges on the vehicle. A lot of times, the vehicles are not worth what we got invested in our towing services.
Probably need to let you know that when you were not here last week under first reading, this was discussed.
Okay.
And this is completely in line with the state statute.
So, they have that as a state statute already, that all personal belongings?
And it was brought out that, oh, I didn't know that, so I might not be applying to the state statute right now. So, that's kind of verbatim from what the state requirement currently requires of a towing company.
Correct.
Chief?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I just want to point out, we may have misstated, based on 3853, this doesn't apply only to police-called towing, because this says the vehicle is towed other than by order of the police department.
Right, and that's just that notification.
Right. I just don't want to give the wrong impression that this only applies to police.
But with respect to the?
That's what I'm saying. The way I understand, this only applies to us as the people on the towing rotation.
Right.
But with respect to the Wichita scenario, the expectation would be that a Wichita firm coming into the community to repossess a vehicle would notify the police department that they'd done so, so that the point of this section is, it doesn't get reported as a stolen vehicle, and we don't know where it went. So, I think this section could still apply to the out-of-town towing scenarios.
Let me be clear, because maybe I was mistaken. I thought the, is this, this is the ordinance for all towing companies, or just the ones on the police list?
Most of the ordinance deals just with those on the police rotation for required tows. That, we're talking about there, the reporting requirement is awarded to be broader than that.
Okay, then my apologies, because I think I was reading that the entire ordinance was merely for towing. So, I'll be clear that I didn't understand the mayor's point on that.
3854, we'll make those notices after impound.
Okay.
Close at the time, we will make them, the driver at the time, at the time it's impounded.
Chief, could you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
3853 is the security interest. And the security interest pertains to vehicles that are towed. Then they sit on the lot for a month, two months, or whatever. The person holding the security interest doesn't know anything about it. The person that had the vehicle towed, who is the owner, but still owns on the vehicle, walks away from it. And before you know it, the tow bills can be $17, $18, $100. So, that's why that's there.
So, the point of that is actually to help the towing company as well, because the longer they allow that to sit, could be a problem in collecting later.
Well, the towing company?
If the owner's not going to be involved.
Certainly. The towing company would end up selling the vehicle, just because there would be so much owed on that. In terms of the notice after impoundment, typically, this is going to be on police toes, and we will, we will do that. And typically, it'll be at the time of the tow, if the person's there. If not, then we will determine the registered owner, and we will send the, send the letter to the owner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up and give us your name and address.
I'm Paul Livinggood. I'm the other half of ANA Towing. I live at 627 Gypsum also. My question on Section 3855, normally, to find out who owns a vehicle, and we pick vehicles up all the time, at the hospital parking lot, Chapel Ridge, you know, and some of them have no tag. They were, the guy pulled the tag, and away he went. So, we have to take the VIN. Now, the only way we can find out who that belongs to, and law enforcement has never been willing to share that information with us. Who's, you know, we give them the VIN, and they can't. We have to fill out a VIN request, put a $10 bill with it, and take it up here to the tag office, and then they'll, they'll tell us who it is. My question was, is law, would law enforcement share that information with us? If we called them in within two hours after we picked it up, you know, could we find that out? You know, because that's a real problem, you know, to try and comply with this, and?
Are you looking at 3854, the notice?
I'm looking at 3853, the, you know, the notification by the, you know, notification to law enforcement and holders of security, because, you know, we pick this car up at 5:00 at night or something. We have no way of finding out who, if there's any security on it, or anything else within, you know. I mean, normally, we'd need a couple of days to find out.
Yeah, the first part, and Chief, clarify, or Mr. Binkstein, if I'm wrong, the first part, Section A, deals with the notification to the police department.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the few-hour notice that we modified to say it can be by phone, email, or fax. And then the second part, B, isn't that the five days, then, to notify the security interest?
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're not expecting you to know who the security interest is and make it, but within that five business days after that vehicle's towed.
Find that out.
Find that out, and then making?
I was going to say, this just, it just, it drives the price up another $10, you know, because now, you know, because that's, you tow the vehicle, and now you've got to take $10 down to the tag office and find out who owns it.
Right, and you would have to, just so I, because I think the assumption of days was just, we have to have something to assume. The cost is one thing. If you don't know the security interest, you'll have to do that irregardless, and then that'll be a cost.
We've done this in the past already. That was, we've called in the VIN and told them, we just picked up a so-and-so car out of Chapel Ridge. You know, if the owner calls it in stolen, we've got it. Well, I tow for several of the repo companies, too, and they do that routinely. So, okay, that was my only question, was if we could get some shared information, get it done quicker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Again, I'm Deb Livinggood, at 627 Gypsum, co-owner of ANA Towing, and that's why this is always going to be gray. Is what we're doing here today, is this proposal setting aside the Kansas statute that's already on the books?
State statute always controls.
Okay. Well, this is K-1103, and it reads, "Any personal property within the vehicle need not be released to the owner thereof until the reasonable or agreed charges for such recovery, transportation, or safekeeping have been paid, or satisfactory arrangements or payment have been?" or payment have been made, except that personal medical supplies shall be released to the owner thereupon, upon request." We've always done that.
I think that had been changed.
Leave your dentures, leave your medicine, you leave your wheelchair, you leave a cane in your car, you get it. I also consider baby seats a medical necessity.
Is that still the...
If your iPod and everything else in there, if you have a 1993 rolled-over Escort or you have a 2010 Lexus, my company has to respond the same way. I'll let you have your iPod out of your 1993 Ford Escort, I'm stuck with that car, but I'm still going to have to put out 60 bucks to get the right to sell it. And I have to put out 60 bucks and then maybe Savage is going to buy it for 50. If your iPod's in there and you're willing to pay the base rate for the tow, you can have whatever you want.
Is that how the, is that the current statute? I thought ours was in compliance with that.
I'd have to check, Mayor. I don't have the statute with me right now, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me look it up. You could read my copy, you want to.
I, I thought we'd reread that section last week. Chief?
I believe we did, it was the, uh, the portion pertaining to passing an ordinance, uh, is, is a city ordinance and what, what belonged to that, but I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me. I don't have that section with me.
Well, it's... It's a matter of, of resolution here, because that was a repeated point from last week by two different companies, so we don't want to make the claim that we're upholding, make the claim that we're upholding a state statute, uh, when in fact we're not.
That might be a good reason to postpone action on the second reading.
That's what I would prefer to do if there's not an immediate answer into that, because last week we, we were, were led to assume, and I believe the other company was also looking at that ordinance and, and had read that ordinance and said, yes, that is the new state ordinance, we have to get mall property. So it's, that issue's been brought up, so...
Do we need to withdraw the motion in second, or can we just postpone with the motion in second already being made?
The, um... The motion to postpone the matter would take precedent over that, um, current motion. The, um, we could certainly defer or, if the time was deemed to be appropriate, and we could certainly do our best to, if you preferred to have the matter just tabled until later in the meeting and have us address it.
I don't think there'll be much more meeting.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure, I want to make sure you knew I was more than happy to, between the chief and me to, uh...
Well...
Pin that down for you, but, uh...
Yeah, I think it's, it's important enough to take the proper time, and I would prefer to make a motion to postpone, and if I understand that, then when we reconvene on it, we're reconvening on a motion in a second.
That's correct.
Okay.
You would res...
Madam Mayor, there is not a motion on the table. We hadn't gotten to that point yet, okay.
Well, it's all a moot point then. So it would be a, it, it would be a motion then to, to table this matter, uh, until, um, staff and legal counsel has had the opportunity to look into the state ordinance as, as brought before our attention.
I'm presuming that, Greg, it should be pretty easy to have that ready for next week.
Oh, no question.
So, Commissioners, you might want to go ahead just to formalize the motion to actually postpone it, uh, until next week's meeting.
Right.
Then I'd just make a motion that we simply postpone this matter until, uh, next Monday. I'm not even going to try to guess the date, October 24th.
Second. It's been moved in second that we postpone this issue until the next regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
If I may, Mayor, I just wanted to quickly assure Mrs. Livinggood that it was not a matter of doubting the document that you have, it was a matter that, the key there is always being able to verify that, from the chief's and my standpoint, that we're looking at absolutely the latest version, so...
Why don't we have the latest version, and it's my feeling?
Well, no, I... I understand, and that's, I just wanted to make sure you knew it wasn't a matter of doubting your position, it was a matter of just wanting to verify that we had the latest.
Thank you.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance number 11, 10,622, amend chapter 42, article 4, division 14, sections 42-303 and 42-303.1, by removing tattoo parlors from the list of prohibited uses and adding it to the list of conditional uses in the C4 district.
Ordinance 11-10622 was passed on first reading on October 10th, 2011. As directed by the commission, the ordinance was amended since first reading language was added to require that the entire C4 district receive notice of the public hearing for tattoo parlors. Is there any public comment on this issue today?
Mayor, if I could, this is, I don't think it's something that affects your action, but it's a point that may be of information that you may find helpful. One thing, uh, when we looked at this and we looked closer at the zoning code, you will not find in another, uh, section in the zoning code any listing of tattoo or piercing parlors in any of the zones other than what would be now the C4 zone. And that prompted a question, because you can ask folks and they say, yeah, I've seen one over here and one over there, um, but it is not listed as a permitted use or a conditional use in any other zone. I don't know that that has a lot to do with what you want to do in the C4 zone right now, but what, it prompted us in our discussion this afternoon to recommend that we, uh, ask the planning staff to go back and work with the planning commission, go through the motions in essence, to ask the question of what other zones would placement of that use presumably as a conditional use, where should it be, and officially deal with that, so you don't get caught up into the issue of either it being, well, not knowing for sure whether it's permitted or whether it's been interpreted to be like another use. Uh, I think we want to clearly hit that, because for a really sound zoning code, you really need to have that as a permitted use or a conditional use, unless you can very clearly relate that to another use and have a good process of doing that. This goes way far, real far back, so it's just something that came up in our review, so I think we can do that as a separate process, and we need to do that to clarify the zoning code, but as I mentioned, it doesn't, shouldn't have an effect on what you're doing today in the C4, but it is a follow-up that I wanted you to be aware of.
You just mean because it doesn't really fall into an ag category or retail category or rest, that type of thing?
Probably not. If, if we looked at it that broadly, we would be usurping your legislative authority, and I don't think you'd want us to do that.
I just wanted to break that down and what you meant, okay.
Well, it's considered cosmetic surgery, we already have that facility downtown already.
Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 11-10622.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adopt on second reading ordinance 11-10622. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Angel?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.4, receive and review the 2010 audit report.
Mr. Frands?
You don't notice I was moving before you called my name? Somehow I knew. We have now completed the 2010, uh, audit and comprehensive annual financial report, uh, using once again Law &amp; Order Web and Oderman, uh, to perform the audit segments of that, that report. A copy has been provided to you. The, um, I did try to point out in the blue sheet some of the more riveting sections of the document for you to, um, look at should you desire to do so. We did receive again a, um, an unqualified opinion this year. We also were required to undergo a federal audit this year, and there were no findings or question costs identified with those items. We do have, uh, present Abram Crislip, who is the auditor in charge, I think that's the proper term, on the project, and I didn't ask him if he had some specific comments, but would invite him to make some, uh, if he desires.
Sure.
Just to echo what Rod said, really, we, we only have three basic components to the audit. The first is to give the opinion on the financial statements, and again, that's an unqualified opinion, um, which is the highest that we can express and obviously reflects positively on the financial management here at the city. The other two components are because we have that federal program section of the audit. At, at the back of the financials, you'll find two separate reports on, I can get the page numbers here, um, 117 through 120. And the, the objectives, they are, one, to, um, note any material non-compliance with any, um, requirements of those federal programs, and the other is to report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. And both of those reports just stated that we found none of those, so again, it's, it's the, the result that you would like to see, um, as a commission, so. The audit went very well this year, and, um, it's never, you know, it's never been a problem with us working with the, the city staff or anything like that, so I appreciate the, the efforts they put forth for us.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, um, approve the receipt and review of the 2010 audit report.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we receive the 2010 audit report. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.5, resolution number 116859, declaring it to be necessary to appropriate certain private property for the use of construction of the East Magnolia Road Improvement Project and authorizing the city engineer to cause a survey and description of the affected properties to be made.
Mr. Binkston?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The action before you marks what is, um, typical in these types of projects where there are, um, multiple interests ranging from right-of-way to temporary construction easements in order to complete a road improvement, uh, street or road improvement project. We're at the point where we do have to work backwards from the KDOT, uh, scheduled bid letting, knowing that, uh, the efforts, and you might recall engaging, uh, the land company under the direction of the city engineer to complete the appraisal and acquisition work, that is progressing well. There are a few outstanding, uh, that are still under negotiation, and we are simply at that point where we have to look at the first step in the statutory process to be prepared if it ultimately becomes necessary to acquire those formally through eminent domain. This is the first step. It is very preliminary in that it simply calls for the, uh, legal description and, or the survey and legal description of those properties to be acquired. And as you would know, that work has generally been done in relation to the project, but it is a matter of formalizing, excuse me, those that are still at issue and describing which properties those are, that has been filed with the, uh, clerk's office. As you might imagine, in this, the key step that we're leading toward is, uh, still working toward avoiding the necessity of having to actually formalize approval of going forward with any eminent domain proceeding on any of the, of the tracks. That comes later, uh, and certainly the effort to wrap up the negotiated acquisitions, if you will, comes to kind of a crescendo at this point, uh, in a continued effort to avoid having to invoke the eminent domain, uh, process. But as I say, it will need to happen pretty quickly here, given the, working backwards from that deadline and knowing that there's an inherent, uh, process involved in, in the formal process. So, uh, the reason I go through all that is certainly don't want to alarm anyone about looking as though we're transitioning to the formal process. This is step one. It is, uh, simply, uh, frankly, checking off this box, uh, in the formal process, uh, but without in any way impairing our intent and ability to wrap up negotiations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and certainly if, uh, Mr. Stack is here, if he wishes to, uh, respond or comment as far as, uh, the process from his vantage point.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve of resolution number 11-6859.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve resolution 11-6859. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we're adjourned.
Yay.